Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. And item number one, if we could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Brennan, here. Councilmember Lehman, Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras, here. Mayor Mars.
Much. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's move ahead then to item number three, Special Presentation Officer of the Year, Mr. Reynolds.
Mr. Tate, excuse me, Chief Tate will make the presentation.
I formally present our two thousand and twenty-one Officer of the Year Award to Sergeant Jamie Pearson. I say finally because we're inching towards the end of March here and she's been really patient for this presentation. And finally, because in her sixteen years of service with the City of Shakopee, if you look at her body of work as a whole, we have many, many wonderful folks that work underneath our roof. But her, her work product over those sixteen years, I think this is an award, a recognition that is long overdue. Jamie was nominated by six coworkers, six folks that represent different disciplines within the Police Department, civilian and sworn staff, not all of which that she supervises. But what a profound statement about her leadership, I think. Her commitment to their growth, what she invests in them, and the type of leader that she is. Now, they cited her outstanding work ethic, leadership, and commitment to relationship building in the community. I want to add one, and that is her, I'm going to use the term uncommonly reliable. Jamie, and I have to say, I do a real bad job sometimes at remembering this. You are so reliable, you're always picking up the phone, everything always gets done on time, and she balances a pretty heavy workload. The last year in particular, she's had to supervise more than what the supervisor org chart says, just because some coworkers have had some extended absences. She's never complained, she's always there for us. And I forget, you know, it's easy to forget sometimes that reliability and dependability that she has, and these are very important tasks. And she does this all Monday through Friday and goes home to a very, very busy family. She is a hockey mom, so the only time she gets to herself is that car ride to and from the office. I left out one other thing that I think is, again, a body of work, not just in the last year that Jamie's done, and that is her incredible commitment and dedication to the Scott County Drug Court. You've all heard about it, seen presentations at scale. Whatever successes they've had as a drug court is due in large part to this person right here. Those aren't just my feelings and my words. The judge that coordinates that court has reached out on multiple occasions and told me how thankful he is that Jamie is there. She's done this as a night sergeant, working overnights, not a Monday through Friday schedule. She is absolutely vital to that program and its successes. And one, one story comes to mind about her dedication success. We had an individual living in a house that had over, easily over two hundred calls for service from the Police Department. Yes, this was a flop house, a code enforcement nightmare, a lot of drugs that were being dealt out of this, and one individual was kind of at the head of all of that. It's very easy in law enforcement, I think, sometimes to just say, lock him up. And Jamie saw something in this individual. Probably not a lot of fanfare for this individual to go to through drug court, but she kept believing in him. Officers kept doing the curfew checks. And I remember going to that graduation for this individual up at the courthouse. He graduated drug court. We haven't had an issue since with that individual, and he is thriving. And again, I think what a, what a statement of her commitment. She helped get him get through that, as she has other people, and the pride and the grin she had on her face that day when he graduated. I know I was looking, I think, more at her than I was at the individual in front of the judge. So, a lot of pride, and it made our community safer, and it made it a better community. So, it is with great, again, pride and pleasure that we, as a Shakopee Police Department and city, present you, Sergeant Pearson, with the two thousand and twenty-one Officer of the Year Award. Congratulations.
Do you want to say a few words, Officer?
I'm not a public speaker. Thank all of you for being here. Thanks to my family, my partners that nominated me. Chief, I've had some incredible opportunities here, and I've got a lot of career left, and I hope for it.
Well, from a thankful community, thank you, really. That's the key. Thank you for your efforts in our community. It really shows that story about the, the drug court and phenomenal success and the impact that you make out there every day in an ever-changing world that we live in over the last couple of years and actually over the last, you know, twenty or so. Thank you very, very much. Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for sixteen years dedication to this community and making it better. It's, it's outstanding that you can see them notches to not only a community, but individuals' lives. I think it's just outstanding. Thank you for all, everything you do. We appreciate it.
Counselor Brennan?
Yeah, I want to, I want to confirm that, and I thank you for what you've been doing in the community and taking a look at the individuals in the community and seeing the real person that's inside of, inside of each person. And, you know, their, your leadership in the, with the, in the Police Department and going above and beyond what needs to be done and just, just doing the work. Thank you.
Counselor Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your excellence. Thank you for your service, for everything. There's not enough words to say. Thank you for putting your life on the line, everything you do every day. You keep it up in many more years. Thank you very much.
Counselor Whiting?
Chief mentioned that you were nominated for relationship building in the community, and that stood out. And I think that really is key to a great police department, and I want to thank you and congratulate you for that. Great, thanks.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Very well done. We head then to item number four, approve of the agenda. Are there any changes, corrections, Mr. Reynolds?
We have one, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Item eight A one, we have the delinquency list that has been changed out, which you now have. As you are aware, we have people that pay throughout the time period, and this is the most updated list we have, so.
The revised roll is in front of us.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Counselor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda noting the revised rule of delinquent bills.
Second?
I have a motion and a second for the slightly modified agenda, including the assessment roll. Further discussion, discussion, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Moving ahead to item number five, consent of business. Any changes, corrections, Mr. Reynolds?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. Counselor Lehman?
Five D, five D six removed, please.
Five D six, okay. Others? Others? Motion, Counselor Lehman?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as modified, Mayor.
A second?
I have a motion and a second for the modified consent agenda, which, as noted, five D six would come off. Further, any discussion? Otherwise, Counselor Brennan?
Yep. Oh, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Oh, well, I guess I will. I noticed that the SPU is here to answer questions regarding five D five, and unfortunately, we're not having that pulled off consent agenda tonight. But I just want to thank them for being, being here for those possibilities. So, thank you.
Do you have more questions on that item?
No.
Okay. Early night, huh? Motion and a second on the modified consent agenda. And before we vote then, we would read the modified consent agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. These are the consent agenda items for fifteen March of two thousand and twenty-two. Five A one approves the city council meeting minutes for one March of two thousand and twenty-two. Five A two adopts ordinance O two thousand and twenty-two Tac zero zero six, amending the city fee schedule. Five A three is our monthly financial review. Five A four approves a wine and Sunday liquor license for Jimmy's Old Southern Barbecue located at eight zero eight eight Old Carriage Court North. Five A, five A five adopts resolution number R two thousand and twenty-two Tac zero four two, establishing polling places and ordinance O two thousand and twenty-two Tac zero zero seven, amending city code chapter two, section thirty-two point zero one, precinct boundaries. Five A six approves a temporary liquor license for the Chambers Reds, Whites, and Brews two thousand and twenty-two event being held at Canterbury Park on March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Five B one adopts resolution R two thousand and twenty-two Tac zero two five, approving the final plat of Valley Crest Second Edition. Five B two adopts resolution R two thousand and twenty-two Tac zero four five, approving participation in the Soul Smart designation process. Five B three approves an agreement with Scott Soil and Water Conservation District for the creation of a Pollinator Prairie on city-owned property in the West End adjacent to Highway one sixty-nine and Bluff. Five B four adopts resolution R two thousand and twenty-two Tac zero four six, approving an application to the two thousand and twenty-one EDA American Rescue Plan Act Economic Adjustment Assistance Grant. Five C one approves the purchase of new civil defense sirens. Five D one approves Scott County program, grant program participation and funding for the two thousand and twenty-two recycling program. Five D two approves the purchase of a digital message sign and equipment in the amount of one hundred and one thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-three cents for the CSAH eighty-three project. Five D three adopts resolution, resolution two thousand and twenty-two Tac zero four one, declaring costs to be assessed, ordering the preparation of proposed assessments, and setting a public hearing date for the two thousand and twenty-two street and utility recon project. Five D four adopts resolution R two thousand and twenty-two Tac zero four three, accepting bids and awarding a contract in the amount of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety cents to Institute of Form Technologies USA Incorporated for the two thousand and twenty-two cured and placed sewer pipelining project. Five D five adopts resolution R two thousand and twenty-two Tac zero three seven, accepting bids and awarding a contract in the amount of four million six hundred and seventeen thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-six cents to Northwest Asphalt Incorporated for the Merris Street, Thirteenth Avenue, and Hanson Avenue Utility Extension Project. Five D seven adopts resolution R two thousand and twenty-two Tac zero three six, accepting bids and awarding a contract in the amount of two million two hundred and ninety-five thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-four cents to Northwest Asphalt for the two thousand and twenty-two full-depth pavement reconstruction project. And five D eight adopts resolution R two thousand and twenty-two Tac zero three nine, accepting work on the Memorial Park Trail and pedestrian bridge project and authorizes final payment.
Mr. Reynolds, thank you very much. I have a motion and a second for the modified consent agenda. It's been read into the public record. There would be no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, that motion passes. Thank you very much. Let's move ahead to item number six. Now, I'd like to call on any resident citizen that would like to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome. On the, not on the agenda. Please come forward and speak into the microphone.
Works that well, but maybe this isn't the right spot for, during your meeting. This is, I just got a, a hearing for a bill that got...
Oh, for the garbage bill, the delinquent?
Correct.
Okay. We're having a public hearing on that in a few minutes.
Okay.
And you can comment during the public part of that.
Okay.
Excellent.
Thank you.
No problem. This is a, this is a time when you can come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda. Seeing none, have we received any electronic communication, Mr. Reynolds?
No, sir, we have not.
Okay. Seeing none, we would move ahead then to item number seven, business removed from consent. And five D six was, which is the lift station, L sixteen rehabilitation, and Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. I took this off consent. I did contact staff with some questions. And, and really what my question or maybe a concern is, is the four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollar engineering administration legal cost of the project. So, we've got a two-point-five million dollar project, and damn near, dang near half a million dollars is in admin, engineering, and legal fees, which come back into the, to ourselves. Or at least that's what the perception is, as this is worded. It was explained differently by email from staff, and I think it's prudent that we explain that publicly, so that it doesn't look like we're actually charging ourself half a million dollars on administrative costs.
And the contingency went down as well, a pretty good portion. But, Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Counselor Lehman. Absolutely correct. And, and Mr. Lily Hogg and I actually discussed this in a little more detail today, and we actually have some more detail that he can give you now in regards to that, that amount.
Keith?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, and, and thank you for giving me the opportunity, opportunity to discuss this large, and I can even say maybe drawn-out project. And I want to give you a little overview of what goes into that four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars of engineering and admin, administration. So, I wanted to give a little overview of, of all the different components that actually went into it, because as part of that project, those different components have come back to you ten different times. And I want to explain each of them because they play into the costs of this project. So, back in October of two thousand and nineteen, we brought the professional services agreement for feasibility study to be performed for the, we called it the Lift Station sixteen feasibility study. That was for fifty-two thousand dollars, but in actuality, it was for rehabbing the current lift station, demolishing the old lift station building. It, it involved evaluating the force main outside of that lift station, and it, it involved updating an emergency operations plan if, in case the lift station or that force main failed. It involved designing the parameters for a new portable generator pump for bypassing for the L sixteen lift station. And it also actually involved, as part of that lift station, the decommissioning of the Whispering Oaks lift station. That was performed by a consultant that we got on board. So, based on that feasibility study, we programmed quite a few different pieces of work. But before we could get to this point, on December seventeenth of two thousand and nineteen, we had to do an emergency pump replacement for L sixteen. So, we had extra consulting fees to get all that in place and figure out in a kind of emergency situation what that pump needed to be, the performance curves of that pump. So, a little bit extra work there, but it was not for not, because we used that pump design for the replacement of the three pumps that are in there. And then on February of two thousand and twenty, another emergency, we had the grinder pump that failed in there. There's another pump that grinds up the sewage and whatever's not sewage. So, we, you know, another little extra task there in advance of getting to this primary project. And then I mentioned, we also purchased this portable bypass pump. It was a hundred thousand dollar bypass pump, and we didn't want to just go pick one off the shelf. It involved, it needed to accommodate L sixteen. Does it, there's a deep manhole there, twenty-five plus feet. We needed to make sure it had enough power to draw out of there, as well as hook into our force main and pump into the force main. So, we had, you know, a little extra work there to design that emergency bypass pump. It's a nice bypass pump, and we use it for more than just L sixteen. And then we had a, another project, the SCADA project. So, in August of two thousand and twenty, we, as part of the CIP, we hired AE two S to design, for design services for our telemetry system replacement. And why did we need that? Our telemetry system is pretty outdated right now. Even with that telemetry system, we're in pretty much a, how do I, in a reactionary mode when we get notification. That telemetry system is so outdated at this point, where we can barely get in here. And if, if we do get a notice, we already have issues rather than a proactive type of system. So, we had that parallel SCADA project, and that wasn't just for L sixteen, it's for the Stagecoach Force Main system, and then for future expansion with our, our South Bridge Lift Station and future lift stations to come. And then, let's see here, in February of two thousand and twenty-one, we presented to city council the L sixteen feasibility study. It was a, a good presentation done by Darren Manning out of the Engineering Department. We looked at a bunch of different options for a very expensive project. And, you know, consulting with you and discussing with you, what we did was, we combined a couple of years in advance, a two thousand and twenty-five project into one, to really kind of capture that economies of scale. Let's only impact this project once, and it did pay off. We did get really good bids here. So, we presented that feasibility study and laid out a good capital plan beyond the next five years. We, you know, we're not done here. We have a generator there that is old, but we're going to keep a real close eye on it. We think we could get another twenty years out of that generator potentially. It's not used very often, so it's low hours. So, there's more to come on Lift Station sixteen after this project. We have a building that needs a routine maintenance as well. So, and then with that presentation at that, that same evening, the city council approved the professional services agreement for the design and construction of the L sixteen project. And that was in the tune of two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And then, a few more steps here. Back to SCADA, we, the city council approved the plans and specs and authorized bidding in April of two thousand and twenty-one. We advanced that project, we bid it. Unfortunately, we came back in May, and we had to reject the bids. The costs were more than a hundred thousand more than I wanted to see on that. So, we re-sculpted the project, the SCADA part of the project, and brought it into the L sixteen project. Not done yet. Then June of this year, we started getting a little nervous about material costs, specifically the two pumps that we had to purchase. So, we came back to you, and we asked for early purchase of two, of the two new pumps that we needed for this L sixteen project. They cost ninety-three thousand dollars. We have them. They're sitting over in the public works garage right now, waiting for this project to be installed. And, oh, and then in January of this year, we finally came with the plans and specifications for the Lift Station sixteen, to approve them and then authorize bidding. And that's what we did. So, there were a lot of different things that came into this project. The, the four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars is, is not new. What's new about it is, is we combined the SCADA project and the L sixteen project. So, up until this council action, you've never seen four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars as a totality. It was, if you, if I were to pull up the CIP pages that are attached to this council item, there's more than four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars in the CIP for engineering and admin in there. So, we, and it includes all of those different components that we have used to get to today. This, just L sixteen alone, it's not a simple project. It's not licensed Steve, civil engineer can go in here and certify this project in its entirety. I can't do that. It involves different components of work from HVAC to pump design to actually some site improvements to do underground bypass pump system. Some of those components that are on the periphery to L sixteen, it involves a coding specialist to come in there and under, you know, do a, an in-depth coding analysis of all the piping and different coatings in the wet well and live well. It involves an electrical engineer for the controls. It involves a programming engineer for the SCADA control. I can go on and on, where it, it's a complex project. I can bring a street reconstruction project to you and get that done and with ten percent of the construction cost for engineering and admin. This I can't do, because there's so many different fields that have to come together.
Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. First, can you explain what SCADA means to the general public?
It, it's the telemetry system where we, it's, it monitors flow, and it monitors overheating of pumps. All the different monitors on the different systems in there, sensors, and it will automatically call us up and send out an alarm if we have an issue. Right now, our telemetry system, it calls us if a pump shuts off, which is not good. It's too late then, and it'll call us if a pump overheated. Real rudimentary. So, it's, it's almost what we have right now. It's almost too late. The new SCADA system, supervisory control and data acquisition, that's what SCADA... The new SCADA system, supervisory control and data acquisition, that's what SCADA stands for. And it it's a, it's an advanced monitoring and sensing system. And we can set some parameters that, for example, if we have if the river line breaks and and we, and the flows increase, we can set a parameter in there if the if the pump runtimes increase more frequently than normal and it sets it above our our setting, it will tell us we have an issue rather than a pump die, which is too late. That's what we have right now. It's like your pump stopped, it's like, oh, no.
Or the flow over overwhelms the capacity of the pumps.
Or whatever reason it stopped, right?
I get it.
So a very complex project.
So Mayor, I I'm certainly not opposed to this project, as I told staff, because the this, this is extremely important lift station. This serves all of Old Shock, pretty much from Tenth Street, sixty-nine Marshall Road, all gravity, the River Interceptor. And it it all flows to this location. This location grinds it up and pushes it by force down to the treatment, Blue Lake Treatment Center. If it was to shut down for any time of period of long period of time, you would have, well, you'd start at the lowest possible row of houses and First Avenue and then Second Avenue and all the way up the hill, and you'd have a complete disaster on your hands. So I get it. But really, my question was, can you itemize out the four hundred and forty thousand of engineering admin and legal? I understand there's legal and admin. So are you telling me that in the engineering portion is the two hundred ninety thousand dollars for the feasibility study from AES, I think it was?
AE two S, correct.
Right?
I I can.
Would you please?
Certainly. So to date, so we haven't spent four hundred forty-eight thousand, and I'm hoping, I'm hoping we can come in underneath that. But to date, we have spent approximately three hundred twenty thousand. That's that's spent already for everything I talked about.
Right.
So remaining, and I'll talk about what we did spend it on, but remaining, we have a hair over a hundred thousand dollars for AE two S to do in-construction services. Again, I, we we need those programmers and experts on site when we're building this. I'm not that expert, we don't have an expert on staff. So we do have a hundred thousand dollars in there. I'm hoping that we do not have to spend a hundred thousand dollars. Seventy-five thousand, eighty thousand, very likely. So hopefully, we'll have twenty thousand dollar savings there. But we are in contract with AE two S for the in-construction services. And then we have about twenty-five thousand dollars extra for city staff bills, their time, and other miscellaneous that we might encounter. We always have contingencies like that on the engineering side as well. So what's in the the three hundred, approximately three hundred twenty thousand dollars that was spent? So we have spent fifty-five thousand on the the feasibility study that we started out with. We spent twenty-three thousand five hundred on the SCADA feasibility study, fifty-four thousand on the SCADA design. We only have about nine thousand internally that we charged. We had to pay for on the old building. We paid for some services pertaining to the environmental evaluation of the old building that we're demoing, looking for asbestos and those those components that we had to include in the bidding documents. As far as the engineering services for AE two S, that's that's where most of those fees have went. Do the math in my head here. One hundred. Gosh, I have too many numbers in front of me now.
The design for was two ninety of it, right?
Right.
The design, you know, totality is two hundred ninety thousand, there's a hundred, so there's about a hundred ninety thousand that has been charged out through AE two S currently.
Mayor, my last comment, like I said, I I'm not against the project. I get the importance and the expense of the multiple professionals from electrical engineering, I I get it. But when I first read this document, and that's why I contacted staff, when you just look at it as a layperson and or anybody in the public that gets the memo that council received, it looks like almost a half million dollars in just administrative legal fees. So it's kind of deceptive. And the email response I got lays it out, which is great. If we had that laid out in the memo, I wouldn't have had, I wouldn't have done this. But I think it's important for the general public to understand, and myself, when I first received this, that's why I contacted staff, to understand that this is not just your standalone engineering admin legal oversight type thing, okay? So certainly nothing to, I'm not trying to go after anybody or anything. I'm trying to make sure it's just clear and transparent for everybody involved.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Counselor Lehman, I do appreciate you bringing it to, because you're right. It look, you look at it and it looks like it's a an exorbitant amount of money. You know, a large part of this, I think about three quarters of it, has actually already been spent on the other stuff. We've got about a hundred thousand that we're looking at for the final of the project. But you covered something that I was gonna cover, and that was the importance of L sixteen and what it is.
Right.
And to the public, L sixteen is the number one, well, by far, it is the most important piece of infrastructure that we have in the city of of Shakopee. Because if 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 L sixteen has a problem and you you gave the perfect scenario, all the stuff that you flush suddenly comes back and says hi. So I think it's important that the public understands that as well, and it is extremely complicated.
Steve.
And one more point if I could make, again, how we package this project and took two years to get to this point. We, from the engineer's estimate, and that's what it is, it's an estimate, but, you know, under the engineer's estimate by four hundred thousand dollars. So so that was, in my opinion, a win. I can always, everyone knows, I could overestimate things, we try not to. But but we got real good competitive bids on here, so so we're happy about that. But yes, it's an expensive project.
Counselor Brennan.
Yeah, I I appreciate the fact that Mr. Lehman put up, pulled this off of the consent agenda today. But I I really appreciate the work that staff and and Mr. Lily Hogg and his staff has done on this project. And, you know, it's, it's, I know that we've been through a lot of this already and we've discussed a lot of the components of this. But I don't think the public always knows what we've been through. So if there is an opportunity ever to, you know, lay it out, especially for a large amount of money for such a, for such a big project to the public and and not have it on consent agenda, I think that's a great idea. So I really appreciate everything tonight, so. I would like to make a motion to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty-two dash zero three eight, accepting bids and awarding a contract in the amount of one million six hundred sixty-one thousand eight hundred dollars to Rice Lake Construction for the lift station sixteen rehabilitation project sewer number sewer nineteen dash zero zero one in the SCADA system improvement project sewer nineteen dash zero zero five.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, further discussion, and Counselor Lehman.
Can we take, excuse me, Mayor, can we take the piece of the email that I received that explained them fees and just kind of attach that somewhere so that if anybody wanted to know, they had some reference?
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank Mr. Little Hogg for flushing that out for us.
No, I, just my comments on it, because I know we, this bits and pieces has been before us over a year and a half. And I always ask questions because I knew this thing was gonna be expensive and we're buying pumps in advance. We had went out for bids and they were too high, we pulled it back. Also, a key component, as mentioned, was the Whispering Oaks decommission aspect that was kind of in on this L sixteen, which was kind of separate, but we're trying to create efficiencies in that. Very important spot in the rebuild. And I did ask staff the other day, I asked Mr. Reynolds the other day to, I don't even know if we even knew, know the answer. Maybe our senior council members. You know, these lift stations are expensive to begin with and the maintenance, and then we have a major rebuild. You know, when's the last time we put some money into it? I mean, you know, is this, is this twenty or thirty years down the line? And maybe a couple of Band-Aids along the line? On such an important line, and here we are, where twenty or thirty years, and it's time now for a major, major rebuild, upgrade, enhancement to carry the load for the next thirty-plus years, so.
I can go back at least twenty years for you, but, and I think it was under, Bruce Lowney was a city engineer at the time. And I think it was right around the time that the L sixteen interceptor line was redone along the river that there was some major work done on L sixteen. So I think that was somewhere around, oh, three oh four, so we're coming up on twenty years, you know?
And everybody uses this system here, a lot of our community, so very important and very complicated. And I thought, staff, you did a great job running through all the way dating back to December of two thousand nineteen. We have talked about this and all right, enough. Others?
Others?
More discussion, more discussion? I have a motion on the table in a second. With no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion passes, thank you all. All right, let's move ahead then to eight A, which is a public hearing for assessment of delinquent garbage and refuse bills by Republic Services and Counselor Brennan.
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
I have a motion and a second by Contreras to open the public hearing. Further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, the public hearing is now open, and Nate will present, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Nate Reinhardt, Finance Director for the city. Tonight, we have a public hearing on delinquent garbage bills. The city's designated garbage hauler in twenty twenty-one was Republic Services. We typically go through this process once a year to certify these charges to the property owner's property taxes. However, this is the second time we're doing this related to twenty twenty-one. This will clear out any outstanding bills we have with Republic at the end of the year. Reference to the city ordinance is here on the slide, but city ordinance, per city ordinance, the charges are a responsibility of the property owner. Per pre, per previous city council actions in our agreement with Republic Services, the city council has authorized the collection of delinquent garbage accounts in the city's designated designated organized collection area. As a result, it has eliminated the need for service for the service provider to stop services on the delinquent accounts. This ensures there's no interruption in the service as, which could lead to a higher level of illegal dumping. Republic provided the city with a list of delinquent garbage bills on February first, twenty twenty-two that covered delinquent accounts again through the end of twenty twenty-one. Previously, we brought forward a list in the fall that accounted for delinquent accounts through eight thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. At that February fifteenth council meeting, city council set tonight as the public hearing date for delinquent garbage bills. Following the council meeting, we sent out letters with payment instructions and information on the process to those accounts that we were assessing. Since that meeting, we've received a number of payments and have adjusted the assessment roll accordingly. Our updated list contains two hundred seventy-eight properties totaling sixteen thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars. For the fall public hearing, we had two hundred thirteen properties totaling thirty thousand. So our number of properties is up, but the dollar amount is less, which makes sense because the previous list could have contained larger bills since it was for a full year versus just the final few months here. Also, a number of unpaid bills covered just a final month or two of service. Following approval of delinquent assessments, a twenty-five dollar administrative service charge will be added to these accounts. The admin charge covers the associated costs with assessing the delinquent accounts. Property owners will then have thirty days to pay the assessment interest free. Following that, the assessments will bear an interest rate of six percent. We will provide a second letter notifying the property owners of the assessment following this meeting. Staff is recommending certifying the assessments for delinquent bills. Remaining actions tonight, you have opened the public hearing. It would be to accept public input, motion to close the public hearing, and then comes a consideration of resolution twenty twenty-two thirty-five, which is a resolution ordering certification of unpaid refuse bill, refuse bills for collection with the twenty twenty-three property taxes. And staff has not received any written objections.
Questions of staff? I have a question, this is standard, we've been doing this every year for as long as I know, right?
Correct.
And then my second comment that if I owed this and got noticed, I could pay to, up to today, to the close of the public hearing?
Correct, yep, without having the twenty-five dollar certification charge, and then interest would start accruing after thirty days from today.
Other questions, comments of staff? If not, thank you. This is a public hearing. If anybody would like to come forward and state their name and address for the record, welcome and good evening.
I'm Jeffrey Johnson.
You can sit down. Like, speak into the mic, and welcome, Mr. Johnson.
I didn't really know it was all like this, so I kind of want to make it really simple for you. And but then when I saw this, I think it kind of goes together. I got this hearing for, I guess, I wouldn't call it delinquent because it's not my bill, but I have to take care of it because I live, I purchased a home at the South Bridge Village condominiums, condominiums. And the woman, I guess, I never met her or anything, the previous owner is the one who had the bill and decided not to pay. And there is no name on my account, except now my name is on this account. And turns out, anyway, I can make it simple for three pieces of paper here if you'd like to take a look at it. Or I can just tell you that I purchased the home on November fifth. I moved in in December, I got the bill from the account with the garage, I mean, the garbage and everything. This is a different type of situation because the garbage is actually paid for by the association and also the the water. So but the, this was an additional pickup for, I guess, mattresses and things that could not be picked up by the by the normal garbage hauler. So again, this bill was, or she accrued the bill from October thirty-first. I paid for, or I first had my or actually the date of my, buying my home was on November fifth.
Counselor Lehman.
Mayor, a couple of questions, if I may.
Yeah.
Mr. Johnson, did, when you purchased the home, did you do a title search in looking for like assessments that might be due on the property? Claims against the property, and then contact?
No, I I don't even know what that is.
Okay, did you, well, it's kind of a personal question, but did you get a mortgage on the property?
A mortgage?
Yes. Normally, when you get a mortgage, the bank or a finance company will hire a title company to handle the transaction. That title company is supposed to do searches for unpaid or, you know, road improvement assessments, these types of things against the property. And if it's a homeowners association, I would assume, and I'm not a lawyer, I would defer to Mr. Thompson, that that title company would also do that to the homeowners association to see if there's anything levied against that that property. And I would ask you, I defer to Mr. Thompson if that's correct or not.
Well, if it's a homeowner, my understanding is the homeowners association sounds like that's part of their fees.
Except for an additional.
The additional charge, so when he did the title work on his property, it wouldn't pick up anything that the homeowners association might might owe or but I don't hear that's the case here. I don't think the homeowners association owes anything, because they've been paying their bill, but this was for one special pickup that wasn't covered by the HOA.
And I think in the past, we've discussed that a lot of these title search companies don't pick up the these bills like this because they're so awkward, they're not lean against the property or anything, it's actually just a service bill.
And maybe this was not captured quite when we started the process to capture the the transfer of ownership.
But this has come up in the past, if I may, Mr. Mayor. But this has come up in the past, if I may, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Johnson, that when properties transfer, someone buys it, you know, uh, sometimes it's a, a legacy bill, and, uh, so that is something you do kinda have to look for, but, um...
People aren't thinking about it. Mr. Reynolds?
Let me clarify my question, if I may, first.
He might have some additional information.
Was, was this routine garbage service on a monthly basis, or was this a special pickup?
Special, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what, Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, I was just talking, uh, with, uh, uh, the Finance Director, uh, Mayor and Members of Council. This is a real odd situation and not one that I think we've heard before. I mean, we've had some where, uh, they've been in the home for some time, but literally, this was quite, uh, uh, I, I mean, staff certainly has no problem with, uh, uh, this not being put on his bill.
How much is it?
Oh, it was like sixty-six dollars, sixty-six dollars?
Okay.
But I just, uh, if I could, just a little bit more explanation. It came, and it came again, the, the bill, and I called right away when I got it out of my mailbox in the beginning of December. It turned out that I called Republic back then, of course, and then it came to be, they said, well, call your association. So then I had to call, and they are supposed to help me for stuff? I guess not. And I got, finally got a guy to talk to. Um, he gave me his phone number. Since I, he said he was gonna take care of it. Then I got another bill, and then I got the, the hearing. Um, so then, when I got the hearing, I called, the guy's name was, um, Joshua Cryer. I don't know exactly what he was, but I'd like to talk to him at some point. But I called him a few times. He's not picking up.
Yep, okay.
Anyway, so, and again, the only because I am doing the right thing, I felt, um, I talked to a guy at Republic, um, in an office in Eden Prairie, and at that point, I, he said, you should do this, you should do this, and you should do this.
Right.
To me, and I s- I go, I'll just go to the hearing.
Okay.
So, but I just wanna say, I will pay the, the bill even for the old, is, I'm, I'm guessing she was older, a lady, because the way it all looked when I first saw it, I mean, the home, and, uh, I don't have a problem with that. However, I just wanna say, many people are getting things like this, I bet, and go, who wants to do this? Who's, who's gonna take their time at, come to a hearing or whatever, they're just gonna pay it and they're not gonna deal with it. And I believe that it's happened how many times, how many deliquent, delinquents you've mentioned and whatever? And I go, a lot of people just don't care and they'll just pay.
And then it goes on their taxes, and so when the, in the future, they, Councilman Lehman?
Mayor, uh, in all fairness, I'm gonna push back just a little bit on that because we have to, let's start at the beginning and understand where, where this is. There was a service provided by an, by an outside company, in this case, Republic. Um, and they should be paid for the service they provided, okay? Whether it's my garbage pickup or whatever. So, everybody has these services, and the company is, is, it's costing them to provide these services, whether it's the insurance on their trucks, the wear and tear, the payroll, the dumping cost. So, if, if nobody paid their bill, we, this number would be astronomical, and the general levy would have to pay for all of it, which means some people would be paying their bill and paying for a bunch of other people's bills, even though they're not using the service. So, it's, it's not like this is money in our pockets. It's not. We have to pay the people that already supplied the service under a contractual obligation. So, it's not as easy as, as saying, you know, people just are go- gonna ignore it and not pay their bill or just pay it instead of fight it in your case. And I suspect that a lot of people on this list did receive the service. They are the ones that received the service, and they're the ones that didn't pay for the service that they received. So, that wouldn't be fair to have you pay for their bill when you didn't receive the service. So, eh, the process that were, were utilized is actually a very fair process. It makes sure that the person, company supplying the services is made whole, and it doesn't spread somebody else's services onto other people that never received any service or paid for their own service. So, just kind of explain that a little bit, I'll...
Well, I think, you know, I've been on this board for many years, so have you guys in the process. I think the, the uniqueness of the timing of that was probably played a role in this.
Well, I think, Mayor, the uniqueness isn't, it isn't even the normal monthly service. It was like an added service or extra service or something.
And the timing of that, um, so, um, do you have anything more to add?
No, I, I understand what you're saying, um, Mr. Lehman, but I...
Thank you.
I've gone through rigmarole in my head with everything, being angry and not angry, and, I mean, you guys are very kind to listen to me, so I appreciate it.
Well, thank you for your time, and we'll have some consideration here at the end.
Yep.
This is a public hearing, would, if you have nothing more to comment, or this is a public hearing, would any ou- any other resident like to come forward and make comment on our delinquent, uh, refuge? Seeing none, Councilor Whiting?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Uh, further discussion, discussion, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. The public hearing is now closed. Councilman Lehman?
Mayor, I'll offer a resolution, our twenty twenty-two dash zero thirty-five certifying assessments for delinquent, uh, garbage bills. And I'd like to, uh, ask council to consider expunging Mr. Johnson's sixty-some-dollar bill.
I'll second that.
Uh, so, I have a motion and a second, but I just wanna clarify, your, your motion includes the removal of Mr. Johnson's, uh, from this list.
For special circumstance.
Yeah, due to sp- you, very unique and special circumstance.
Mayor, the, uh, not only am I asking to remove it from this list, I'm asking for it to be paid. Um, it's, it's a very small amount. It's very unique circumstances. It's nothing of his own doing. Uh, it couldn't be caught in a regular process because it wasn't the normal service. If it was the normal service, it would be a different matter. This isn't, this was an extra, uh, pickup, non-normal. It wasn't yard waste. It wasn't recycle. It wasn't normal trash service. Um, and...
Built separately than the normal were on, in that, this case, a homeowners' association pays.
Right.
Is built into the fee of the homeowners, I agree.
So, I'm asking that it be removed from the list here and that it gets taken care of by the city with no administration cost, uh, applied either, so...
And...
Do you understand?
Yep.
I concur.
And so, the second concurs with a, uh, better explanation on the motion, so further discussion, Councilman Lehman?
Is that something staff can handle?
Yep, we're good.
Does Mr. Johnson understand? Okay.
Thank you. There is a motion on the table in a second. No further discussion, discussion, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you all very much, and we will move ahead then. Two eleven A one, set a date for a general obligation series two, two thousand twenty-two A. Nate will present. Welcome.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council members. Uh, staff is requesting city council consideration of, uh, setting a sale of general obligation bonds, series twenty twenty-two A. Uh, council has been provided a pre-sale summary of the bond issue that was prepared by our municipal advisor, Baker Tilly. Uh, following my presentation, I'll invite, uh, Paul Steinman, uh, Steve Sharf, and Tom Denaway, uh, to provide a few comments and answer any questions that you might have, but they are here in attendance to, uh, help explain things, I guess, if you have questions. Uh, tonight, we're asking for council to adopt a res- resolution that'll, um, authorize the city to sell bonds, which will occur on April nineteenth. Uh, on March twenty-ninth, staff will participate in a bond rating call with S and P. Uh, bonds will be received and tabulated the morning of April twenty-ninth, or April nineteenth, excuse me, by Baker Tilly, uh, who would then provide a recommendation to city council that evening. Uh, the bond proceeds would then be received by the city on May nineteenth. Uh, the total bond sale being proposed is ten million, uh, but is divided in, uh, for two different purposes. Uh, the first being five point nine one million in tax increment bonds. Uh, the proceeds will be used to fund, uh, city costs that have been identified in Exhibit C of the Development Agreement of Tiff District number eighteen, which is the Canterbury Tiff District. Uh, the funds can be used, uh, for any of the city costs that's listed in that exhibit, uh, but it's expected to be primarily used for the County Highway eighty-three and the net cost of the workforce center acquisition and demolition costs. Uh, this table probably has little, uh, more detail than was needed, but we do have some bond proceeds, uh, still remaining from the previous bond issue. Uh, we'd spend those bonds first, um, and then the proceeds from this bond sale would cover, uh, city costs, um, over the next year. Uh, debt repayments have the first, uh, right for tax increment revenue. Uh, tax increment collected is set, uh, aside at a hundred and five percent of the next debt service payment. Uh, pay-as-you-go note payments to the developer are paid out of, uh, remaining increment available after debt service is paid. Um, so here's that Exhibit C for reference. Uh, again, anything identified in the column, uh, City Tiff, uh, is an eligible use of bond proceeds, which is, uh, highlighted in the green box here. Uh, funding the improvements through a bond sale is consistent with, uh, the approved agreement, uh, and allows the city to pay for these public improvements, uh, and then be repaid through, uh, tax increment revenues. Uh, this will be the third bond sale related to the Canterbury Tiff District. Uh, in twenty nineteen, we issued, uh, four point two million for Twelfth Avenue. Uh, and in twenty twenty, we issued eight point, uh, one six million for Unbridled. Uh, with this bond sale, we have issued a total, um, total power amount of bonds of eighteen million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand. Uh, this would leave us with remaining authority for a maximum amount of four, four point zero eight million related to the Tiff District. Uh, as we get further down the road, um, and have a better understanding of, uh, remaining costs and the timing of these costs, uh, we can determine whether it makes sense to issue another bond at that point in time or, or fund these, any future projects and costs, uh, internally and then reimbursed with, uh, tax increment. Uh, we did look, um, at a lot of different, uh, scenarios and iterations, uh, of the bond sale. Uh, just wanted to point out a couple of items. Uh, we looked at the district in whole, um, and whether there, there was an impact to the district, um, to repay over eighteen, uh, twenty or twenty-three years, uh, in comparison to a fifteen-year. Uh, I'll, and also ran these scenarios based on whether district was fully built out and then under a partial build-out scenario. Uh, Tiff revenue would be sufficient to cover, uh, a hundred and five percent of bond costs, uh, even under a partial build-out scenario, um, and even with, um, based on the current construction that's, um, out there right now. Uh, ultimately, we believe the most advantageous scenario was to issue debt over eighteen years, uh, and to wrap the debt with the previous issues. Uh, this means the annual debt service, uh, of the three bond issues combined, um, would be flat over the eighteen-year period. Uh, there are a couple of benefits in doing so, uh, so this keeps the annual debt service coverage amount the same from year to year. Um, uh, projections show the developers', um, pay-as-you-go note would be repaid quicker, uh, because that's at a higher interest rate than, or bond issue, uh, which ultimately could shorten the duration of this district. Uh, the bonds also contain a call provision on February first, two thousand and thirty-one, uh, which would allow the city, the city to pay off or refund some or all of the remaining bond, bonds at that point in time, um, for those maturities after that point. Uh, in a scenario where tax increment revenue meets or exceed our expectations, uh, or a full build-out scenario, the city would have the option to prepay, uh, these bonds and decertify the district early, so, um, kind of some built-in flexibility there. Uh, ultimately, we believe the structure, um, uh, again, provides us with the most flexibility and also, uh, makes the most sense financially as well. Uh, the other portion of the bonds are improvement bonds of four point zero nine million. Uh, these bonds are issued under Minnesota Statute four twenty-nine, uh, which allows the city to issue bonds for street projects if they're, uh, financed, uh, with at least, um, twenty percent special assessment. Uh, we're able to use this authority, um, because we have street reconstruction projects that meet this threshold. Uh, bond proceeds will be deposited, uh, to the capital improvement fund, uh, meaning an equivalent amount of funds will be available to complete, uh, these or other projects listed in that fund. Uh, the bonds will be repaid through, uh, a combination of special assessment and a debt service levy. Uh, the debt service le- levy would be approximately three hundred and ten thousand per year over ten years, uh, which equates to about a thir- uh, about a thirteen-dollar, uh, thirteen dollars annually in property taxes on a median value home. Um, here is a summary of the capital improvement fund without, um, a bond issue in comparison with the proposed bond issue. Uh, projects are listed for the current year and for twenty twenty-three. Uh, in absence of additional funding, our cash projections are showing the fund would be a negative balance, uh, at the end of the year and then extend further, uh, negative in twenty twenty-three. Uh, the larger projects, uh, built into this fund include overlays, street reconstruction, and the one sixty-nine, uh, pedestrian bridge. The primary funding sources of the CIF fund, um, include the capital projects levy, uh, franchise fees, and MSA state aid. Uh, these revenue sources have been flat, um, over the past few years, uh, where we've seen, um, an increase in construction costs over that same period, uh, which has kind of created the, the funding gap, and the proposed, uh, debt will, um, help close that gap. Um, that is all I have. Um, I'd like to, again, introduce Paul Steinman, Steve Sharf, and Tom Denaway from Baker Tilly. Um, you guys can cover anything I might have missed, and, um, I know there's a couple of items I, I asked you to touch base on, and then, uh, they'll also be available to answer questions.
Uh, questions of staff? Councilman Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, you said thirteen dollars on an average house. That's for this bond. How about the other bonds that are out there?
Uh, the other ones are, are paid for under tax, through the tax increment revenue, so they're fully a hundred percent paid through tax increment revenue.
How many portion of thirteen dollars would be the street improvement concept of this at a little over four million?
And the over, the pedestrian bridge and what, over one sixty-nine and over any other projects that are in this? Then, the other, the other question I had was, uh, now, in our general levy, we've got a line item for capital improvement fund that we take tax dollars to put into the capital improvement fund every year.
Correct.
Then we're gonna have a debt service levy to pay for some of this infrastructure, and both of them line items are funded by the taxpayers, but not taxpayers that are in a Tiff District.
That is correct, and if, if I might, if you don't mind, um, so, really, what's happening is, you really have a couple of different options. I, I think probably the other alternative to issuing a bond and, and increasing the debt service levy is to increase the capital improvements fund levy. So, if we were to, you know, prepay or expand that, um, really, the levy's being provided to the same fund, right? Whether it's a debt service levy or a capital improvement levy. Um, however, I think you would have to increase that pretty significantly if you wanna be able to meet the obligations for the next couple of years or the projects for the next couple of years.
But normally, when we say we spread this, these costs over all the taxpayers, that's not necessarily true because Tiff, Tiff districts do not participate in the general levy.
That is correct.
And they also, so they...
Additional value that they have.
So, they als- they also don't pay for any city services that are in the general levy, even though re- they receive them city services.
They, they do, if I may, they do participate to the point where the Tiff was established. So, let's say a piece of property is worth twenty dollars.
Yep.
Uh, and then, at the end of the Tiff, it's gonna be worth two thousand.
Yep.
They're still paying that twenty dollars.
Yeah, I understand if you have an empty field and it's paying twenty dollars taxes.
Yeah.
You're putting that towards services, but you're really not sweeping the field or stuff like that. But when you put a big apartment buildings there, now you have people calling for services, and you're adding staff to sweep the streets, clean the sewers, fire police, whatever, but they're not paying for them services. They're not contributing.
Nate?
Uh, Mayor, Council, Councilmember Lehman, Councilmembers, um, one of the projects that's being financed through the, the Tiff is Colony Road eighty-three, and, uh, that project would happen regardless of the Tiff District. I shouldn't say regardless, but, um, so, in, in absence of being able to do a bond that's being paid out of tax increment revenue, I think that, a portion of that project would, would fall on the, the levy as a whole, would fall on those homeowners. So, this is one way to be able to fund that project through the, you know, through the increment revenue.
Other questions of staff? I have a couple on your slides. So, on the Tiff bond aspect, you said, um, if I point not yet a slide that, that had a total of five... So on the TIFF bond aspect, you said five-point, not yet a slide that, that had a total of five point nine million dollars. But on, on the top line on the slide, it said, no, the, go back a little farther. Right here. You said, so the bottom line says five point nine, but there's some carryover from our previous bond issue, right?
Correct.
Of one point five in here, so all of our ten million is, five point nine is not going to the TIFF out of our new offering because we have some carry, carry forward offer, another offering that we're using, is that correct?
The bond issue is for five point nine million, so there is five point nine million that would be going additionally into, into the TIFF.
Okay. Then I asked a question the other day, and I, we got an email about Canterbury and the TIFF, and it has our, when we set this up, we had our base rate at such value, like this recent example of twenty dollars. That had some, had some value. And then as we increase the value of the land to get faster, and I asked Paul a little earlier and, and Mr. Reynolds about the runs that we saw when this was floated, and it, now, there's so mu, there's, the value is happening quicker, faster, that the, the, the TIFF is technically at this point in time getting paid off a little faster. And as we get more things in the ground, and hopefully that continues as we see values go up and more development out there, so. Did you have a comment, Mr. Kurski?
Mayor and council, right now, we have about a hundred and seventy million dollars of the projects beyond what you have on your sheet that will come on the tax rolls over the next twenty-four to thirty months.
Another hun, hun, hundred and seventy?
Hundred and seventy million.
Hundred and seventy million.
They come on to the TIFF rolls.
Correct. And what that does is it accelerates the TIFF repayment.
Right, because the value increases faster.
That's correct, Mayor. I think the point that Nate made, that we have four point four million in here that would be on the general bond that we've actually rolled into the TIFF so that it did not come out of all the taxpayers, it's being paid for only out of the TIFF.
More questions of staff? More questions of staff? Michael, Nate, thank you. Paul?
Hot seat here, hot seat there.
Wherever you want to feel comfortable. We'll get the bright light on you here in a minute.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. I'd just add to the introductions of my colleagues here, the remainder of the team. Mr. Scharf and Mr. Denaway play an invaluable role on this particular issue. A, because Mr. Scharf is our numbers engineer, and we went through fifteen or twenty or twenty-five different scenarios before we arrived at this one. And Mr. Denaway, because he is all-knowing of TIFF, our TIFF expert, so. So just two, two items that I'm going to discuss in about four minutes. This item that's up in front of you is to preempt your question about the market. And if you stare at this chart long enough and then look up, you'll see the walls of the council moving around. So don't do that. But really, it's easy. Look at the black squares in the middle. Those signify the historic average yields of bonds over the last thirty years. The black squares. The lime-green squares represent where we are today. So, you know, we hear talk and talk and talk about inflation and, and bond pressures, et cetera, but really, we're still sitting today under, by a fair margin, under historical average yields represented here over the last thirty years. So it's still a good time to be in the market as an issuer. Not so great as an investor, but getting better. That's why rates are moving upward. So that's point number one on the market. And point number two is, we did something semi-creative in this bond structure that was very advantageous for the citizens of the city of Shakopee. So if you look in the pre-sale summary, in the sources and uses, you'll see that the city is putting about a million-six of cash into the improvement portion of this deal. That is financeable. So that's a million-six that you could have financed here with this ten million-dollar issue. So we'd have an eleven point seven, six million-dollar issue, essentially. There, there is this category of bonds by federal designation called bank qualification. Bank qualified bonds, I won't bore you too much with the sausage-making of bonds, but it's important. Bank qualification is limited by federal law to ten million dollars for each entity that, that is issuing tax-exempt bonds. So we wanted to stay at the ten million-dollar bank qualification limit. What that does is it, it tax advantages, it tax advantages banks to invest in your bonds. So when you go above ten million and you have non-bank qualified bonds, banks don't bid. So more banks that bid raise demand for your bonds. Demand raises the price, and interest rates and yields work inversely to price in the bond world. So your interest rates, yields go down. So that, that, in a nutshell, with our numbers engineer behind me, who quantified it for me today, equaled an interest cost savings of about a quarter million dollars on this issue to stay in the bank qualification category. So thought that was important to bring forth as well. And that's all that I had, and I'm happy to take questions. And if I can't answer them, team behind me.
Questions of our consultant? I have a couple. So this is a neat chart you have here, and I appreciate that. But the Fed will meet here in the next week or two, and we do expect a Fed increase of a quarter of, maybe even a half has been talked about, whether that's built into the market or not. Are we saying that even after that Fed funds increase, that these rates will be about the same?
Mr. Mayor, so the Fed will meet in about eighteen hours, actually, to make a decision on twenty-five basis points, a quarter of a percent versus fifty basis points, a half a percent. We do think that a lot of that is already baked in. At least a twenty-five basis point upward movement in the, in the Fed funds rate, so.
My second question is that being, being qualified under ten large, or ten million, usually what I see in typical municipal offerings of even the last one, two, two issues that we had, they're just bought by one, one person, right?
One, one underwriter, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I mean, they just buy, because it's not a hundred million dollars or two hundred million dollars. These are considered small offerings in my mind, and that would just be purchased by one, one house, one bank, all at once.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think, though, that, that typically there's the one name that you see. Like, if it's Robert W. Baird, or et cetera, there's usually a syndicate underneath them and-
And then, then they split it off, but they're, to me, they're the taker of the underwriter in whole, right?
They are, and, but they're, they're selling those, they're selling pieces off to banks, too. So that's where that advantage comes in.
All right, those are my questions. Other questions of the consultant? Councilman Lehman?
Well, it says the full faith and tax and credit of the city. Does that mean if everything goes sideways, we're going to pay this one way or the other? If there's no development, no more development, prices substantially crash, and then what happens?
In, in that world, that, that the full faith and credit of the citizens of the city of Shakopee, that's what that means. In the end, if there's nuclear bombs that fly and things happen, that's, that a court would eventually order you to pay it. That's, that's precedent that's set in law, so.
And the TIFF districts would not be paying the general levy portion of that debt service, would they?
The, the TIFF district creates the tax increment revenue that pays in advance of the levy. There is no levy anticipated for that portion, but-
But the debt service to pay this is not coming from the TIFF. A portion of it is coming from the general taxpayers. And if the TIFF district can't pay it, then does, does that portion then move over to the taxpayers?
It's a general obligation bond, Councilman Lehman, so, so whatever isn't paid for by TIFF revenues will be paid for through a general levy.
But, Councilman Lehman, I appreciate your questions, but in a pay-as-you-go TIFF, and even though we're doing some bond issues, which we've already done, too, we have enough value right now to carry the load with the TIFF, with the value on the land right now. Now, Crash of Bond, you said no more further development. If there was no further development, the TIFF, the, the value of the increase in the TIFF can carry the day of the offer.
Providing the property values don't go down, right?
Well, they're way ahead of the game now, yep, we. Other questions of our consultant? Other questions? If not, Baker Tilly and their staff, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, further discussion? Counselors? Councilor Whiting?
No, I'd like to adopt resolution R. two thousand and twenty-two dash zero four zero, providing for issuance and sale of general obligation bond series two thousand and twenty-two A in the proposed aggregate principal amount of ten million dollars.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Discussion? And I just, you know, this does include our, some four million dollars worth of value, or dollars for County Road eighty-three. I believe it includes West, East Twelfth Avenue? In our road construction aspect of that? Is that true, Steve? That's okay. So this includes Twelfth Avenue East as well? In the road construction aspect of this bond offering?
And councilmembers, that cost would fall under County Road eighty-three?
Oh, it falls under.
So is, is-
Yep, so, so we would be authorized with, again, with anything within that green box. So we've got a portion of, of Twelfth Avenue, we've, was with the, the last bond. There's some remaining costs with that. Within that miscellaneous traffic improvements, if there's driveway costs, that might be one thing that we use those funds for. So the one, the item that's not necessarily included, the big item that's not in here, is the Eagle Creek Roundabout, which won't occur until after this project happens and-
So, so Mayor and councilmembers, it is that top line item of, my screen went blank here, so it's like four point three? Yeah, it falls within that four point five million, the Twelfth Avenue East.
Yep.
I think what we're missing on the screen is what's not in a TIFF that it's funding.
I think that's typical year, yearly road construction.
CIP.
On project is, uh-
Full depth.
I can't remember what it was. Gorman, Stagecoach, and other piece.
And that's four million dollars. Four point oh nine.
Mayor and councilmembers, the, I mean, it's, what Mr. Reinhardt showed was for the specific projects that it does include. I mean, so there's a, you know, and it's over different years, so there's a lot of projects that it does not include. So the best way to look at it would be to pull the PowerPoint back up if we could and to answer that question about what projects are specifically included.
Well, I understand that, you know, about sixty percent of this is being used for the TIFF District that are remaining and going to our normal CIP street improvements.
Yeah, and just one final comment. So the way, the reason why these are combined together, because the other option is issuing these as two separate issues, right? But combining the two together, you're saving issuance costs, you're being able to issue a little more per year, I guess, which also reduces your, your cost of, you know, you just receive better bids, they'll be more attractive with the larger dollar bonds. They, they will be split within, the documents will be split scheduled, so we will know exactly which repayments belong to what side. So it, it'll be easy enough to do that administratively.
Okay, thank you. Motion on the table with a second. Further discussion? Discussion, discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Thank you. All right. Let's move ahead. Eleven B one, Shakopee Brew Hall, summer food truck request. And Michael's going to present.
So Mayor and council, this is a request by Shakopee Brew Hall to have food trucks through the summer on First Avenue. So their location is just towards the end of the tent in this aerial view. And I think the staff's concern is that they are also going to be getting a parklet. So if you look at this picture with the Shakopee Brew Hall, where the two green dots are, so there will be four parking spaces basically taken up by the parklet. And then if we put a food truck next to it, we're losing significantly more parking. So on an ongoing basis, they're already taking up four spaces for the parklet for their use. And then if you have a food truck there, you're losing probably another three or four spaces.
Okay, so questions of staff, Councilman Lehman?
Can we give them the op, option of the parklet or the food truck, but not both?
Mayor and council, that's correct. Once we install the parklet, it's not coming out until the fall. It's a permanent structure, basically.
Right? And then, Mayor, I have a follow-up, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
And then we know that every year we have requests by other businesses, and one of is the car show thing on, I think it's Friday nights, and any other requests from individual businesses. At, at some point, how do we, I guess, long-term manage these requests? Because you could have so many different requests that you do become a parking problem.
Mayor and council, I mean, I think staff, when we bring things to you, we look at what the impacts are. So Rhythm on the Rails is a good example. They closed Lewis Street for five Wednesdays to the train tracks, and they use the Lewis Street parking lot. People find a place to park for that event. I mean, they've had crowds of five thousand people, and they park all the way up past the county square. Because depending on who the attraction is, people don't mind walking a few blocks. I think on a day-to-day average, when you don't have a special event, there's some expectation they'll be parking nearby a business or within walking distance. I think one of staff's concerns with the parklets, we are going to be eliminating some parking that we want to make it as convenient as possible. If you start now adding food trucks on top of the parklets, I think there's some concern that you're going to get some people that are frustrated.
Mayor and council, the other thing is, too, is to take in consideration, if you were a resident who comes down and is sitting in that parklet and you're sitting next to a food truck, the food truck has to actually run while they're serving their food. So you're sitting outside with your glass of wine and your meal, and you're smelling the fumes of the food truck. That's something else to be taking in consideration, plus the running generator and all the other activity that happens. It's not that we want to deny Shakopee Brew Hall the opportunity to have a food truck. It's unfortunate, though, that they are in a location that limits them to have that kind of access. And there is a parking spot in the back, but it's not a, a very, it's right next to a garbage can. So it's not really feasible to have a food truck next to a garbage can. So, but that's something else to take in consideration.
Question on that, the, last year, they had a food truck event, or a couple of them. This is, what, two weekends a month for three months from noon until nine P.M.? So that food truck would run from twelve to nine P.M.?
Yes, and they also just want to tell us when they're going to have the food truck. Usually, when a business is having a food truck- we know specifically the date and time. This is not really specific. It's just, they're not really sure yet which weekends they're going to have a food truck. They're having a hard time finding food trucks. And so they just want to have approval of which, these weekends through these months. And then they'll tell us when they have a food truck. And so there's that consideration also.
Councilor Whiting?
I appreciate that input on there, you know, and you bring up some good points. When we talked about the food truck ordinance, my concern at the time was, you know, we have tax-paying restaurants that if this food truck could set up right next door to, right across the street from, you know, we, they're not paying taxes. They're utilizing the traffic, I guess, I'd say. So I have had concerns, especially in this area, because that's our restaurants area. There's a street taco place, a building, you know, or several other restaurants in the area. I would hope that Shakopee Brew Hall, and I know they do, they allow food to be brought in from those other restaurants. So I would hope for more of a partnership with some of the restaurants than adding competition, I guess, by adding a food truck.
All right. Good evening and welcome. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Drenau. I am speaking on behalf of Shakopee Brew Hall. I am the events and festival coordinator, self-proclaimed fund facilitator. And so I just wanted to add a couple of points of clarification to our request. It does list every single Saturday through the months of June, July, and August. But really what it comes down to is I'm really hoping to have two weekends a month. So six Saturday afternoons where we would have a food truck located near our parklet, as shown up on the screens. This would be a four, maybe five-hour timeframe that our food truck would be up. It would not be a permanent fixture of the downtown. Really what it comes down to is food trucks and breweries kind of go hand in hand. People are looking for a chance to grab a pint and some food and to hang out with people. We've done really great things with our downtown neighbors. Turtles runs food over to us. We see Bravas come over all the time. So we have those partnerships already established. What we're looking for is an opportunity, opportunity to bring in new customers to downtown Shakopee. I've just had a conversation just before coming down here with some of our regulars who follow one particular food truck, and they've traveled to Prior Lake, they've gone up to Bent Paddle to see and, and get food from this one specific food truck. And people will do that if we bring food trucks here as well. When they come down and they visit the food truck and our brewery, they will see Turtles, they will see Bravas, they will see Billy's Taggery as they walk by. And, and they'll say, wow, this is such a great place to, to experience, and they'll want to come back. Because that's what people come and do all the time when they have their passbooks. Never been south of the river, but man, I'm sure gonna come back because this is a great downtown location. And so we're looking for another avenue to bring new folks down into our city and, and just show them all of the different things that we have, just another attraction to, to pull them in.
Thank you for that brief overview. You know, having a parklet and then soaking up more parking and then the truck runs and I'm sitting there trying to enjoy with, is that a concern of yours as a business?
Um, not particularly. I mean, we've, we've had a number of different food trucks throughout the years. Some take up, you know, two or three parking spaces, some, some take up, you know, more than that. And so realizing that the parklet is going to be there is going to be one of the questions that we, as the business bringing the food truck in, will ask. How many parking spaces are you looking for? And, and really giving favor to those food trucks that might use up less parking so that we can have more space for our, our customers. Just knowing that there's, there's a bunch of parking in the downtown area, whether it be, you know, across the street or in, on the Lewis Street Lot, behind us, next to Pablo's and stuff like that. Really trying to find ways to, to highlight those parking lots is something that I know we've, we've talked about with the chamber as well. And so, so we just need to, to inform our customers of, of the various ways that people can park as well.
Well, yeah, no, during the, you know, the pandemic and it changed, it created a lot of creativity. And of course, we had a big tent and folks really liked that and it consumed a lot of parking. But folks, you know, can't we keep it? I heard, can't we keep it?
And, sorry to interrupt, but to that point, I, that entire summer of 2020, I worked in that tent, running veers back and forth. I never once heard one person complain that they couldn't find parking and we had that entire street blocked off. And part of it was probably they were just happy to be outside and, and out and about. But even still, people are asking for that tent back and that's a whole nother discussion.
Well, one of the byproducts of the tent was then let's do parklets as they do in other communities and so, other questions? Comments? Councilor Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I do have a question, concerns. My first one is, like, the parklets, it's new for us, right? It'll be the first year for us that they go in. So that to me, right, it's like, I'd like to see how it works. Make sure that there isn't going to be any issues, like, you know, for the city to start off. So I'd, I'd like to just, by itself, just let them be how, how they are and let that run through for a little while. And then my other question is, what kind of food trucks? I mean, what are you thinking that would be coming in? Because my concern is the impact, you know, to other businesses. You wouldn't be bringing a taco truck and we have Bravies right next door. I, I don't know. It's just that to me is a huge concern. And then, I guess you guys were supposed to talk to your neighboring businesses. Are they all on board or what are they thinking?
Yeah, we've talked to several of our, our neighbors and they are in favor of having us come in. There's a number of other businesses, bars, that do not serve food that would also benefit from having a food truck parked in front of their establishment as well. And we got the okay from our direct neighbors, Arnie's, to, to park in front of them. Just a verbal agreement, but an agreement. And as far as the variety of food trucks, there's a lot of different things out there from different cuisines that aren't featured in downtown Shakopee. And so really trying to bring in a variety of food, just to kind of mix it up and give people a few different flavors to choose from, from their normal fare.
More? Councilor Whiting?
You know, I, I would push back a little bit. I think we did kind of try the parklets with the tent. I guess you could call it a parklet. In fact, that's kind of a bigger, I think it might, may have taken up even more space than what the parklet is intended to do. The ask is big here. Two weekends, a, a month, throughout the summer, three months. So I would consider looking at maybe paring that down to two weekends a year to start, to see what happens, test drive it kind of. That would be my proposal. Let's get a food truck down there, see what happens, and then, then we can talk about what, some facts.
Councilman Lehman?
Mayor, I, Councilor Whiting and myself may have some agreement happening here. But, but I, I think, I think I'm gonna throw in Councilor Contreras's point too, because I, I think she's on to something with, let's see how these parklets work too. So I, I think you gotta combine all of it together. Let's get the parklets in, let's scale this back to a weekend or two after the parklets are in and, and do a trial run and see what happens. So I kind of agree with both of you on that. I think your application is overbearing. It's not just two weekends a month. This is five and, uh, four and, five in June, four in July, four in August.
Yeah, I was writing more for the flexibility of scheduling because we don't, we don't know really when, when these food trucks are available. And so to, to put out a, a request for one, you know, say the first weekend of every month or any one weekend of the month and then say, well, you know...
I understand, but from our perspective, if we're approving what's on the sheet here, that's what we would have to allow then. And I don't think that's what we're agreeing to.
Okay. Councilor Brennan?
I think the parklet is a great opportunity that we've already approved for the downtown area. And I think that was something new and different to try and support the businesses that are down in that area. So I would like to leave, like, like Councilor Contreras stated, just let it go for a time, see how it works, see what you can do with it, and then add, make an additional change to it maybe next year or, or perhaps like Councilor Whiting suggested, maybe once, one trial time this year. But I know that I wouldn't like sitting next to it, next to a, to a truck or try to maneuver it through that area as a walker or as a driver in the neighborhood. But I would be willing to give it a try for one, one time.
Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I think you all know that there's probably one issue that has been around at least since I've been here, and I know way before I was here, is the concept of parking in the downtown. And, you know, we, we, this council has done a lot for the downtown. During the pandemic, you basically said, you know what, we're going to close off this road and we're gonna allow a tent to be erected and we're gonna allow people to stay outside. And we kept it closed even longer than what you originally had intended because of the request. Then there was a, a write-in campaign, I guess if you will, of people trying to pressure administration and, and others to have the tent full-time. We were looking at that point on the parklet concept. We brought that forward. You looked at it. You made the decision to move forward with it. You know, I, I honestly believe that the character of a downtown defines a community. A downtown is the community. But we have to keep this delicate balance in mind, you know. Once a month at least, I'll get a complaint about no parking downtown. I know that you guys get complaints about parking as well. And if we don't keep a balance here, we're taking, Michael, do you know off the top of your head, the parklets are removing how many parking spaces downtown?
Fifteen.
So fifteen are gone already. And they'll be gone permanently all summer.
For the summer.
So we will continue to get complaints about parking and if we have a food truck down there on top of the parklets, which we haven't even had the impact yet. We're gonna have even more complaints about parking. It's a delicate balance.
Right. Caitlin, you're, you know, you're a part of the vitality of our downtown and playing an important role there, the Brew Hall redevelopment of that building and the goods and services you sell out of there are great. Would you, rather than vote on this, would you want to go back and rethink your proposal and come back in a couple of weeks?
I will certainly do that, yes.
After some feedback here? We are looking for balance. It's pretty all-encompassing, your request. You know, food trucks are great. I don't, I don't think they really take away from our downtown businesses because of their unique and specialness of them. But I guess when I read this too, I went, well, it's not so special anymore because it's gonna be noon to nine on... So I think with the feedback, if you could rewrite your proposal and come back, would that be okay?
Will do.
Okay. Councilman Lehman?
Would, would that proposal then go to staff, I would say, probably? So, take our feedback, rewrite your proposal, meet with our staff, get a feel of, you know, how they're reading us and they can bring something forward or go from there.
Fair enough.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move ahead then to 11B2, the skate park improvements. Welcome. Hello.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name's Alyssa Olson, senior planner, and I am going to present the skate park project to you tonight. So a little background, when the skate park at the community center was constructed, wooden ramps were brought from the previous location to this location with the intention of using them for as long as they were useful. And now they're becoming difficult to maintain. So we have in the CIP over three years, a three-phase project to improve the skate park. We are proposing to combine that into one phase. First of all, to address the maintenance issues, but also because it's financially more efficient and it reduces the amount of time we have to close the skate park for construction. So we did do some community engagement on this project. We had an event at the skate park last summer where we met with folks out there. We had a sign at the park and we had a community engagement website. We also talked to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. So what did we hear? We heard that there was some interest in some new features, which we have included in the proposal. We heard mixed opinions on concrete versus wooden ramps. Ultimately, we decided concrete, just because they are more durable, easier to maintain, and they'll last longer. Some other stuff we heard were interest, was interest in some amenities like shade, water, and lighting. So we already have a straight, shade structure out there. Lighting is very expensive and maybe not what the neighbors would be interested in having there. And we are gonna add a drinking fountain in response to these, to this feedback. The budget in the CIP is $357,500 and the project estimate is just under that. And we would put the existing wooden ramps, we would declare them surplus property and put them out at auction. And if we received any revenue for those, that would be applied to the project. So here's the concept. The white features are what's already there, as well as the slab and the bleachers and the awning are already there, but then everything else would be all-new concrete features. And we are recommending that you adopt resolution R. 2022-044.
Councilman Lehman?
The concrete, now skateboarders and rollerbladers and stuff, when they wipe out, they, they like the smooth surface on the wooden ramps and stuff because they can actually slide without grinding themselves up like a motorcyclist on a highway. Is this concrete, smooth concrete?
Yes, it is. So it's safe for falling on, as safe as it can be for falling on.
Who's falling? Okay. More? Councilor Whiting?
Just curious, says, would the concrete be quieter?
I think the concrete actually is quieter because the ramps are sort of hollow, you know, and it kind of amplifies the sound. So, yes.
Because I do get noise complaints, and I'm thinking of that, kind of that hollow
Yeah, the wood.
sound that I hear when I'm by the community center, so.
Yeah, hollowness in the wood, and I've gotten calls too. Councilor Brennan?
This is like an area that I have no idea what is good for a skate park. So I really appreciate the fact that we had so many community engagements on this because that's, that's really helpful in my decision. And I know that this has been on our list for, for a while and it was coming up on our CIP, so I appreciate the work that you've done. So I'm, I'm gonna make the motion to adopt resolution number R. 2022-044, accepting a quote and awarding a contract in the amount of $354,775 to Spohn Ranch, Inc., and designating equipment as surplus for the Shakopee Skate Park Improvements Project PA 22-03. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Councilman Lehman?
Thanks, Mayor. Full disclosure, my, my son I know was involved with city staff talking about this. He's an avid skate rollerblader. He's part of Roll Minnesota. Actually, I think he is Roll Minnesota.
He was on the original committee.
Yeah, I have zero financial interest in this.
How much did you have to pay for Band-Aids?
I don't do it myself, and I certainly have...
Too late.
I was going to mention, I think we need to have a council outing when this skate park is done, and we'll get helmets.
We have the same name, so it'll be, it can be a part of that. It just won't be this one.
We will certainly have the video graffer waiting for that.
Okay, well, at least we'll get out there for the picture, not the video.
You know, I'd just point out that he's got a lot of experience and expertise in this area, and I know he was involved in the process, and what I know is only what I hear him and his folks talk about. There's pros and cons on all different sides. There's some skaters that like concrete. There's some that like wood and that surface, and there's others that, you know, strokes for different folks. So whatever we do is going to be an improvement for a lot of people in a market that really needs that attention, so that's going to give that, that age bracket.
So I have some questions. As a, I apologize, as a motion and a second on the table, but is a footprint enlarging?
No, it's not.
And we said no to lights and water, right?
We are adding a drinking fountain. We said no to lights, and there is a shade structure already there, so.
Oh, right. Yeah, you know, I've gotten calls from the neighbors that are adjacent, or got calls prior to at the old location. The wood did create, you know, the bouncing, but I got to say, they were, the other day it was snowing, and, and the ice is just starting to melt, spring's right happening, and, but they, they're out there, even in the snow, and gets pretty heavily used, and finally, you know, after some Band-Aids and some old equipment that we moved, here we are. So you're going to combine all the phases and do it all at once. What is the expected construction timeline?
Ideally, this spring.
Okay, but is that a month or the park's down?
Oh, sorry. I think three weeks was the estimate.
Three weeks that it would be closed. Okay.
I have, I'm sorry, one more question on that. Can we offer any kind of more birmingham or trees, if we have the ability to kind of buffer that from the residential area? If there's any ability to do that in the planning, because we do get noise complaints.
So the trees, you know, when they, when we moved it over here, the trees were, you know, youth trees. Now, they are growing, and, and they have a, you know, a deciduous tree, and then they have a, you know, evergreen, and they, so it, you know, it does kind of break it up. I don't know if there's any more that needs to be added in that area, but.
If there's an ability.
Yeah, quarter pipe is going to stop a lot of that noise over here.
We can certainly take a look at that as part of the project.
And I know we've been replacing trees along the boulevard off of Fuller there over there, too. Counselor Brennan?
I just wanted to add one comment. I know that when everything shut down at the pandemic and, you know, those first couple of months, you would drive past that skate park, and it was so busy with kids, and it was a great addition to our, our community, and you can tell it's just really well-loved, so it's definitely time to move on with a new one.
More? Less? Motion on the table and a second? Further discussion, discussion, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion passes. Nice work. Thank you.
Thanks.
Counselor Lehman?
Motion for a short recess?
We got two more.
Oh, well, all right. Motion on the table for a recess till nine o'clock. Further discuss, no discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion passes. Okay. We will reconvene this City of Shockley City Council meeting for March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. After our recess, we're moving ahead to eleven B three. And welcome back, Ms. Olson, on the Memorial Park Playground Replacement Options.
Thank you, mayor and council members. We're back with some information about replacing the playground at Memorial Park. As you know, the playground that's there right now is not in great shape and becoming a safety concern. So a little bit of background, the Parks, Trails and Recreation Master Plan calls for taking away the existing playground and replacing it with a nature play area in a different area of the park on the west end near the shelter and the pond. Memorial Park has Native American burial mounds and is considered an area of cultural resource. So any work that we would do would involve the SMSC and the state archaeologists. So we're talking about a nature play area. What exactly does that mean? The nature play area is just a less structured play area, and the essential element is just like, the elements are made of natural materials. So you're not going to see any manufactured play equipment. But what you might see would be things like boulders or hollowed-out logs. You might see stumps that kids can jump across or downed trees that you can climb on. Some of the nature centers in the area have nature play areas. They were some of the first people to have them. And in those cases, they're much more interactive. The kids can actually sort of change the landscape, so there'll be logs that kids can build forts out of, or there'll be a station where you can make mud pies. That's not necessarily what we're suggesting, just because it's a lot of maintenance. Those types of play areas have education staff on site that reset it all the time, and that's not quite what we would want to go for. But something more along the lines of some of these, where you're seeing the, the bigger elements. And nature play areas connect children with nature, which is really important when we have a lot of screen time these days. And they've also been shown, when compared to regular playgrounds or traditional playgrounds, they encourage more creativity, they engage kids for longer periods of time, and they encourage more aerobic activity. So when looking at this area of the park where the plan indicates we would move a nature play area too, there's some things to consider. So we wouldn't be doing any excavation, so any elements that we install would just need to be sitting on the surface or surface-mounted in some way. And so inherently, those types of elements are just going to be really large, heavy things. So we are tentatively proposing this location just east of the shelter. It is in areas that have already been disturbed and would limit the need for heavy equipment to be moving across large areas of the park. And this is just another look at that area from the ground. We're estimating a budget for this, excluding archaeological work, to be about two hundred thousand dollars. And timeline, we would work with Public Works to do some archaeological work first, then put out an RFP for a nature playground designer, and then come back to you guys for a concept review. And ideally, we would install when the ground is frozen next winter to minimize disturbance. That's what I have for you.
Good. Questions of staff, Counselor Whiting?
So I guess I have a lot of questions about what it might look like, but we're not at that point yet.
Right.
So I guess, from what we know, would we be putting any kind of surface material down? Like, you've seen gravel or rubber. All over the years, we've done different things.
I had a few discussions with nature play area designers over the past two weeks, and the most common method would be laying a layer of gravel down for drainage and then setting the elements on top of that, and then you could come in with mulch on top. You may not do mulch. You may keep it gravel. There's a few different ways to do it.
Thank you.
Counselor Brennan?
Did the, and maybe Mr. Lili Hogg can answer, did the old playground get looked at, and what was the status on it?
Mayor and council members, we actually installed the mulch already. We put about two thousand dollars of mulch out there. And then there's some minor repairs with some coatings on, on some of the, on some of the handles out there that we'll be looking at, kind of retrofitting with some underbody-type coating that you put on vehicles. And we're going to continue doing inspections on it. So right now, there's nothing broke-broke on it. But we're expecting to continue making repairs throughout the summer on it. And it, it might get to a point, probably the most notable issue out there are the slides. With some vandalism, you know, melting of some of the slides out there. It's hard to get a replacement slide, so it, it might come to a point where we just simply have to remove the slide and put a bar, a couple of bars across that hole in the structure. So that's what to expect, and if things change out there, we will, we will keep you updated.
Counselor Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I guess I have to go back a little bit to our last meeting when we, when this was brought up and in my head, and I do have to apologize. I'll say that because I was, I don't know how I got confused. It was my fault, and I did say it was heavily trafficked, and we know it is. But today, I went out there, and aesthetically, it's not pleasing. I mean, oh my, it's old. I have tons of pictures. I, I, the slide, there's cracks. I mean, if, I'm not going to say, if there's like multiple little kids, I guess, and if it gets a little heavier, I mean, that, it, there'd be huge cracks. There, there, it's bad. So I guess what I'm trying to say is I officially today am saying, don't spend more money on it. If we can get rid of it sooner, the better, and the sooner we can start working on this, the better. There's wrappings of, it's bad. That's all. Like, I mean, I have pictures, and it's, the slides are broken. They're cracked. I know you said they're not that big, but it'll, with, I think, this year's usage, yeah, we're in bad shape. Sorry.
Thank you. Counselor Lehman?
What's the age of that park, equipment? Does anybody know?
Twenty-two, we think.
Yeah, it's, it's at least twenty-five years old, I would say.
The rust, sorry, the, the rust on the poles, it's.
Yeah, I think that, you know, the, it was pretty noted at our last meeting, the parks and, the playground is in bad shape.
Right.
And then, can we put a Band-Aid on it till we get to this plan and then see? And I'm all for, we said, oh, put five thousand dollars into it, and we put some mulch in it. And I think if the slide gets so bad, we remove it and, and make that aspect secure. But we're talking here. But we're talking here on this project that we might have an opportunity, if we can get through the summer with kind of the current, and then by next winter, we would have this new nature, more natural playground in place for the next year. Councilor, or Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, and as we stated before, if it becomes clear that it's a safety hazard, at that point, we're done. But we'll do everything we can to try to extend the life through the summer. You know, we clearly have concerns, and we just wanted to make sure the last meeting that you were aware of that. And, you know, we'll do what we can to keep it on life support.
Councilor Whiting?
The discussion, I think, was, we're having a park that has a lot of picnic shelter use. And taking out all the play amenities and leaving nothing for a year was not very tasteful.
Right. I think my concept on, I like your more natural, less ground-disturbing, because those are cool features, some of the ones I saw. And I'm always looking for different, right? You know, it's always a swing set and a metal twirly and some teeter tots, and, oh, those are not in use anymore. But, you know, we're always trying to be creative and create a new look and feel and not everything just the same. So, this would be very unique. I don't know how much that cost. I see at about a two-hundred-thousand-dollar budget. Is there, to make it really cool, do we need more? Or is that about right? Or we don't have any idea right now.
That's our best guess. I think at two-hundred-thousand dollars, it would be a pretty big nature play area. Of course, we'd have to see what comes in with RFP, but...
I think also moving it, one more comment, and then that park gets used so much. And to bring the playground closer to the shelter, which I think that shelter is our number-one used shelter within our system, if not the number-two, it's used all the time, to bring that closer for families that use that and then instead of seeing their kids half a block away, it'd be right there, right? So, I think that's, and also for the people that come down to the mill pond and feed the ducks, and playground's right there. So, I think that that offers some great opportunity for us. Councilor Lehman?
Two comments. First, I know we have people on staff that have park safety equipment certifications. Okay, so I'm sure them folks will be making that judgment call with the training that they have. Second is, I'm thinking about these big concrete culverts with the hole in it. Be a great climbing, kind of hideout little thing, and it's too heavy to go anywhere with. Maybe we could find somebody that would donate something like that. Contractor, maybe FabCon.
That's actually an element that is pretty common, is a tunnel that you build grass, you put grass over the top of it. So, it becomes sort of a mound, an earth feature.
Cool idea. Counselor Contras, did you have more?
One more, I guess, question. So, where this shelter is, there's, on the right side, there's a grill, right? I mean, I just, it's pretty close to where this playground. Will that be moving or will it stay or?
We haven't got to that point, but we'll definitely make sure it's far enough away.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Have you received enough? Councilor Brown? He was getting my attention.
I was just wondering, it states here that we'll be working with the SMSC. Have they already been contacted? Are we working with them or?
Yes, we met with some representatives on Monday and kind of told them what we were thinking. And they just said, we should make sure we're doing archaeological work and keep them in the loop.
Okay. I would imagine, and I'm not, you know, an expert on this, but I would imagine with the road, this is fairly close to the roadway, that that would benefit traversing through the area and carrying those heavy components.
Yeah, and that was kind of the reason we were choosing that site or proposing that site is because we could get there without disturbing very much undisturbed area.
I think the natural aspect of it is very good for this park. You know, we want to keep it not cheesy, you know? We want to make it sure that it's, even in a playground area, that it's fitting in with the feeling of the park and the quiet aspect of it, instead of metal poles sticking out of the area. So, I think it's a good, I think it's a good idea to look at it. I would like to see that we keep the playground, current playground, as long as we can while we're working on this other one. But, and I know that this was part of the Parks Plan when we discussed it. So, I know that group would be supportive of it.
All right. Any last comments for staff? If not, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move ahead then to eleven B four, gravel pit tax increment financing. And Michael will present. Welcome.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to mention that Alyssa's doing a really good job. We're getting a lot of different park ideas and great community outreach. We were just talking Clarny Hills, which, as some of you have seen, we're getting a lot more density in that area, and that park's been waiting for years that we're going to try and do something. Because there's power lines running through there, we can't do typical playground equipment. But she's been looking at some really interesting ideas, kind of along the lines of Councilmember Lehman, that we would actually build some hills and incorporate some pipes and things. So, stay tuned. I think there'll be some pretty interesting proposals coming forward.
It's electric. We could do a Tesla car.
So, Mayor and Council, this is a discussion on tax increment financing legislation for Shakopee gravel pit. Senator Pratt has put forward a bill, which is nearly identical to mostly the other gravel pit legislation that's been in the state. So, here's a good idea. This is the Edina Centennial Lakes. This was a gravel pit tax increment financing district. Apple Valley actually had one and has now had two districts. Savage's had one. Maple Grove also has one. And to give you an idea of scale, from one end of this lake to the top is about half a mile. So, when we talk about the Shakopee gravel pit, it'll kind of put it in perspective for you. So, this is a picture that was provided to us by Shakopee Gravel back in 2019, before development really started to come around it. This is actually the Shakopee gravel site. And you all had been overseeing this since 2013. They had come in to do some additional mining. But again, the current owner of that site hasn't owned it since its beginning. It's been owned by a couple of other parties. There's currently two partners. One of them passed away, and so his family is the second partner. But you can see back in 2013, 2012, there were areas that they were reclaiming. The city did not require any specifics on the reclamation area or any engineering on those. So, those basically have been filled in, and you'll see in some current areas what that means. So, this is actually Shakopee Gravel today. The Material Yard is a landscape company that's right next to them. You can see Seventeenth Avenue and County Highway eighty-three, just to give you an idea of scale. So, these, you can see Valley Crest. This is Thrush, which was just put into County Highway eighty-three. That's the Valley Crest subdivision, which is underway. Tonight, you approve the second addition. They've already sold all the lots in the first addition. They're actually ahead of schedule, but I don't think most people realize how close the gravel pit is actually to the road here. This is another good perspective for you. You can see over, where the words are Summer Gate, that subdivision literally is sitting kind of on a cliff. It's a very deep hole and actually is stepped down. You can see on the left of that slide. And then this is Seventeenth Avenue in the distance, giving an idea of depth. And this is a much better picture than we took today. So, Green Meadows Park, Thrush Street, you can see the Wyndham Ponds neighborhood over on the right. And you can see how deep this pit really is. When we took these today, I was kind of astounded how deep it was. And so, all that area that's been reclaimed has just been filled that they brought in. Any reclamation of this would require basically removal of that material and recompaction with engineers in place. You have seen a couple of different development proposals since I've been here. Mark Noble said there were some before then. The issue with the site is, even if the site were super cheap, you're still looking at a huge number to try and reclaim it. And that's why all the other cities have realized that and had to do TIFs. So, to put this site in perspective for you, it's basically a hundred and forty-one acres. The Ford site in St. Paul, which is considered the largest redevelopment site in the state, is a hundred and thirty-five acres. So, when we were looking at it, and when you've looked at it, one of the things we've been pushing for is to create a more walkable neighborhood, create some kind of large public park with an amenity, connect to those existing surrounding neighborhoods, and kind of create a signature development. The last plan you saw basically had a couple of warehouses up on the corner of Seventeenth Avenue and County Highway eighty-three, and then lots kind of crammed together, and that project went away. So, we worked with some people in the development community and one of our consultants to come up with this concept plan that would create that signature element. That's a half a mile basically across, so very similar to the Edina Lakes, Centennial Lakes area with a mile basically walking loop around it, connected by bridges. You'll notice it's connected back to all of those existing neighborhoods. It would have a major commercial component on the corner. One of the things we've heard from everybody that's either living in this area or considering buying a house in this area is that this is an area that does not have any grocer. So, we've been actually talking to some potential grocers that could look in this area. And then some higher-density housing kind of on the busy corner. And the roads that you see towards the bottom actually match up with the roads that were approved and are being built as part of the development, that you approved the second addition tonight. And again, creating some streets that are pedestrian-friendly, walkable, really creating some paths for the neighborhood that basically you could walk to the grocery store or walk around the lake. So, the current legislation that's before the, that's being discussed at the state legislature basically would allow for the developer to expend money over time to reclaim the pit, and that money would be able to be recaptured through a TIF. The rough estimate just for the reclamation is probably close to eight million dollars. And then, that doesn't include the acquisition, but the total development cost just of our concept plan here, the value when that would all be done would be somewhere between two-hundred-and-twenty-five million and two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars. Since it's largely residential, the payback would be a lot quicker than some of our other TIFs.
Questions of Staff? So, Councilor Brown?
When I was on the Planning Commission, we would have a yearly review from the owner of the pit, gravel pit. And they would talk about the current, how it was being filled. And they discussed the fact that they were planning for this to be a development, and the trucks would come in with dirt and would fill up the area, and they were landscaping, filling it according to a landscape plan. And how is, how, what is the, how did it go different from what we were told at the Planning Commission and what we're being looked at today?
So, Mayor and Council, I think what you were told at the Planning Commission is what they did. They did berm around the site and planted a lot of trees that have grown up fairly nicely. But there was no requirement from the Planning Commissioner or City Council to do anything beyond some groundwater monitoring, because there were some concerns back around 2010, that you can see how deep this is, that it was going to impact Shakopee Public Utilities well, which is near here, and so they began doing water testing. But there was no requirement for any kind of monitoring or any kind of reporting besides showing what they were filling in. And I think the last developer that looked at this, oh, I think it was probably a year, year and a half ago that came before you, they basically walked away and ended up buying the farm that was next to this. Because when they looked at the years that it would take, so if you're a developer, you can go buy a farm or buy the farm next to this, and that farm is largely sand and be under construction in less than a year and have your roads and houses built. This is going to be a major undertaking for someone, so they're going to have to go to a bank, borrow the money to basically fill this in, which is going to take years, because it all has to be monitored and lifted. So, every single family site has to be certified by an engineer. This is not a simple process. And so, they aren't going to get that money paid back. I think we looked at first numbers, probably about year five, they'd start recouping some of their TIF money. So, this is going to take someone who's got kind of that Ford site vision that has some pretty deep pockets, because they're going to have to front a lot of money to try and fill this hole in and make it work.
Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, two thousand and two, I remember the meeting well, one of my very first council meetings. Bob Sweeney was there, and Shardlow was the guy in charge of the plan. And he stood before us and told us they were going to make, when they get all done, this is going to be all development-ready. That's what they said. So, it doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense that these folks take a mining application and make their money off mining it and telling everybody it's going to be developable when they're done. And now that they're done, that's not what's going to happen? Well, I don't think it's, I don't think it's fair for the rest of the taxpayers to pay for this. If their obligation is to refill it and make it developable, that's what we were told, and that's what they should be doing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I agree with you, Councilor Lehman. I think, I'd like to see some clawback, because, you know, to the point of the Planning Commission, and I've been at many of these meetings too, when they've talked about their reclaiming plan and things, how, is it just something that our city engineers blew over their head, they missed, that we weren't on top of it to understand that we need to put pressure on them to fill this correctly? Is that what happened?
I'm not going to blame anyone, but I think the, back whenever this was approved by a city council, long before any of us sitting here, other cities, not the ones on the TIF list, but they have made a requirement. And I talked to a company that actually looked at pricing to fill this in, who actually happens to be another gravel company. And the newer pits, they have to basically post a bond with the state that says when they're done, it's restored. This is fifty-plus years old, and that wasn't a requirement by the state. And the city never required any, you know, if we were doing this today, you'd have Brown InterTech or some one of the big engineering firms there on a regular basis, and they would be checking materials going in the site, inspecting it, watching the lifts, getting compacted, et cetera.
Since those weren't put in place at the time, there is no clawback.
Oh, wait a minute.
Correct.
Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, I'm not, I'm not sure the city actually, I believe the city didn't want to approve this and were actually forced to by a higher entity, if I recall.
Well, there's some history here, so...
Long, long history.
Long history. And, you know, they did sue, they did get their permit, conditional use permit. It was reviewed every year. They, I have some heartburn too. I believe, both on the Planning Commission for a decade as well as on the council and, you know, their representatives, Mr. Shardlow, we have a reclamation plan, and we are going to grade this out as we go. I believe back then, there was some monitoring of the water, especially in the northeast corner, very close to the water table.
There's a new well put in?
Yeah.
Monitoring well?
Monitoring well, I thought. You know, and now we see it back twenty years. This is a, you know, it's been a gravel pit for a long time. But I look at some prestigious points of view from our community of land that, you know, why hasn't this gone earlier? And, you know, this is a pretty prime piece off of eighty-three.
I mean, the real estate community, I talked about the site, Mayor and Council. This is like our hundred percent corner. But then when they, I mean, this was flown today, and when you actually see what it looks like, now I know where they all go, have a nice day.
I didn't like the first plan from the development that we saw. I like this plan a little better. I do like that stormwater feature in the middle that actually creates an amenity with a trail around it. That is a phenomenal, why we're not seeing more of that. You brought up the Ford project. That's a signature piece in the Ford project. But I'd like to see some, go back in history a little bit and see, and maybe we didn't have the reclamation requirement built into the CIP or to the conditional use permit.
I'll see if I can find my original Shardlow agreement.
Well, you're, you're.
I may have, I may have that.
So, yeah, Mayor and Council, we've looked, I mean, so unfortunately, I mean, this is the kind of stuff the Planning Commission and the City Council approved. And this actually shows, as you can see today, because that's thrush on the bottom there, it's been mined even further back, but it was basically, we're filling in some areas. There was, I read the minutes, there was no discussion about having an engineer on site, you know, they did pledge to not do, at least they didn't put in any wood or other materials that were undesirable, but again, they're the second owner. I think there's some heartburn on the part of any developer taking on that big liability, and that's why nobody, this is considered, I mean, Lowe's is right across the street, so they only go in very specific places in the country. So you have a really great site, but no one wants to touch it. I mean, I've talked to at least half a dozen major developers that are like, yeah, not interested, including the one that did Centennial Lakes. They brought it up. I didn't even know that was a gravel pit, and there was a garbage dump there. I mean, today, when you look at it, you think, I mean, that's Edina's largest park.
No, and I, I have to say that I followed the one in Apple Valley. The one in Edina took probably twenty years to build out as it slowly came. I started, I think it started from the south and, or from the north and, and then a little bit in the south, but it, you know, today it's a signature piece of that, of that area. Maple Grove has more, a bigger gravel pit as well. These are not tough. So on the legislation, if we need the state legislature to take action on, on this, and then my second question is if they did go forward with it and approved it, it does not require that we use it, right?
Correct. So Mayor and Council, we're only here to inform you tonight, if this legislation gets passed and Governor signs it, nothing happens. I mean, it's just like we have TIF districts all over the city today. Any proposer is going to have to work with our financial consultant, come, and we're going to have to come back with a plan that says, here's what the real costs are, et cetera. All this is, is enabling legislation to give you that tool in the toolbox, so that if a real developer really wants to bite into this, you know, someone that's willing to do a Ford-sized site and willing to take that risk, we would have our proposal from them. We've got nothing right now.
So my other concept is, while we've seen a plan before, and now we see kind of a concept plan again, and been around long enough that know that we'll probably see another concept plan.
I found about ten, ten in the files, so.
Or, you know, it'd be great to see if we got this tool to put in our toolbox and kept it in the toolbox, and then a developer came forward and said, here's the plan, and okay, we, we might help you on this tool, with this tool, but I, I want the plan that we see, and I don't think that.
So Mayor and Council, we would not do this unless it was a PUD, so it would have to be guaranteed, this is what you're going to build, and that's life.
Okay.
Didn't Novak Fleck build out here at the old gravel pit? Yes. They had a gravel pit in Shakopee when I was a kid, right over here, and they built homes on it. We didn't have to do anything with it. They reclaimed it themselves. And there's currently houses there, so.
Well, I think the laws have changed, and I think that some people have scraped the earth and then they leave it. I think it's now a requirement to have a reclamation plan and.
Or a gravel pit, or a gravel pit. I wouldn't mind having a gravel pit to play in.
For your dune buggy and your.
Yeah. Right back to my childhood.
Okay.
I'll buy it for a buck.
Well, call the owner.
I mean, I said, Mayor and Council, I did not grasp how big this was until we flew it today. I mean, it's one hundred and forty acres. You don't fathom how big and how deep that is.
To find this is bigger than the Ford project, I.
Kind of shocked me.
Yeah, I, me too. And I think these aerial photos are much different than we saw either at the council or on the Planning Commission years ago. You know, we would see them, pictures from inside the floor, you know.
Them pictures of areas of reclamation was Shardlow saying, this is the area we now are done with taking the minerals out and reclaimed, and this is how it's going to go into the future in areas. So that's what we were told and understood. And there are people that I'm sure have all these documents.
No, we have them all in laser fission. I've read through them, and.
I was thinking Kathy Gar, uh, Gerlock.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I think to the mayor's point is nowhere in those documents does it say, you shall restore this so it's buildable. I mean, they're filling it in, but for what purpose? I mean, I think that's, we had a really large developer, M.I. Homes, and I think it was Opus that was here last time. And I asked them, and they said, the cost to pull all this stuff out and to fill this hole in is mind-numbing, and, you know, we're all in a business, and we can go do the field next door or go somewhere else. This is a, you're married to this project for a long time.
All right, so, Councillor Brennan?
I, you know, I think it's a really large area that has to have something happen to it, and, and I don't think that, unfortunately, I don't think that the owner is going to be able to do it on their own, and, and we're, you know, we just can't sit there with a big hole in the ground for, for the rest of the eternity, so, so I think it's appropriate that we look at as many options that we can to have this completed.
Mr. Reynolds?
And I think that's ultimately the, the point is, is, is about the options, because frankly, even with a TIF option for this, it's still going to be incredibly difficult to get someone, because it, it's a big, they're going to have to have really deep pockets, and they're going to have to be really committed.
And a lot of really good film.
Yeah, so I mean, it, e- even, even if that was the case, you know, this may be a big hole for many, many years to come. But it, it does give us yet another option that we can work with.
All right. Would, and I know this is a city-generated thing here in regard to this area, but would there come a time when the, the owner would come before us? I know the owner spoke at the last time when he had a concept.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I think the, the issue today is, I think Councillor Brennan hit kind of the nail on the head. It's pretty well mined out. You can see from those photos, there's some material they left behind to actually build future stuff on this site, but there's really nothing left. And I'm sure, I, I know the other owner, the, the one who's passed away, his family are like, we're not putting any more money into this, we're out, dad's dead. I mean, it was pretty clear when we met with him last time.
We're out, here's our hole.
Yeah, I mean, and I, there's, as the city administrator said, this might sit here even with some incentives for a long time, because there are probably, I'm going to think a handful of people in Minnesota that have the financial wherewithal. They're going to commit to do this and take the risk. You know, you need a, I mean, look how long the Ford's, even with all the incentives St. Paul put on the table, the Ford site has been a thought for, I think, probably ten years, and finally the Ryan Company's got enough engines, and they put TIF and a whole bunch of other money and state money into it to get it done, and it'll get done over the next five, ten years. This is going to be another site that's going to take a long time, because again, I talked to a gravel company. To do this right, I mean, you're going to have to go mine somewhere else and bring it in here.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, this is not an easy job.
Gravel in, gravel out.
Yeah. I mean, you just can't put dirt in here, which is kind of what's in here now. It's not going to structurally support anything.
All right, review and discuss. This is already over in St. Paul. We won't know till May.
Yep, it's, it'll work its way through the legislature.
It ties us to nothing.
Correct.
Enough direction, more comment? More comment on this matter? Seeing none, we would move ahead then. Ten E, our bill list is in front of us. Any comment questions? On that? We're doing a, a better job of stripping out some data in there on our bill list that we're presenting out in our packet. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, we are. We're trying to balance being obviously transparent and open, but also recognizing that there's some bad people out there that would like to steal our stuff.
All right, all right, great. Liaison report and administration report. Councillor Brennan?
Councillor Brennan, the SPU meeting was last week, last Monday. And one of the things that I was asked to present to you was the issue that we're having with fraudulent calls made to people to get their money on delinquent, claiming that there's delinquent accounts out there. So what they would like us, like people to know is the SPU does not disconnect customer power after two o'clock PM, does not disconnect customer power on a holiday or a weekend, does not require payment while on the phone to avoid immediate disconnection, and does not ask customers to purchase a gift card, a Visa card, or pay with a Venmo to make their payment over the phone. And further, if, if there is any calls that you get and you feel that you're being put under duress, that's not something that the SPU will do. They will not force you to make a payment. Do not use non-SPU method payments. And I explain those above by purchasing a gift card, a Visa card, or pay with a Venmo. And if you have any questions, or if you feel that something is not right, or, or outside of those guidelines, call the SPU and, and talk to them and have your account balance checked, and, and use the e-billing or other standard methods for paying your bills. I went to the ribbon cutting today at the Scott County. And I think that's it.
Councillor Lehman?
Good advice on the fraud there. Scale, scale had a presentation by the townships. It basically went through their histories and Minnesota townships' histories, statistical data, how many, how long, what their roles are under state statute. It was just kind of a overview of townships in general. It's kind of, kind of a good presentation. The other presentation was by the chambers. It was focused on what they learned through the pandemic, and they focused on all the positives, and I, I tend to not polish the positives, but try to fix the negatives if you want to make things better. My analogy that I raised was, yeah, you may, may have come out of this forest pandemic, and now you're crossing a road to go into a different part of the forest, which is extreme inflation and high energy cost, which affect everybody from businesses to households to, well, government operations.
Okay.
That's all I have.
We're glad you're back. Councillor Whiting?
Nothing to report.
Councillor Contras?
Thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, I met with the pandemic response advisory team with the schools, and just to report that our numbers per ten thousand in Scott County are at eight point four for COVID. So we will officially just start meeting as needed, hoping no other breakouts or anything happens. Otherwise, numbers are good and hoping they stay like that.
Good.
That's it.
Oh. All right. For your mayor, my mayor report, I went to the county ribbon cutting for their new building today, and, you know, I, I must be getting old a little bit, because I do remember when they first built the first justice center, and then the the jail across the street, and now another new building, and the former county administrator was there, and he, he said, yeah, that's, that's taken a long time, two thousand, almost thirty years of building out their campus here, so, but that was nice. Also, as an email this afternoon, that through the House and the Senate, our community project got, part of it got funded. I know Representative Craig was very, very active. I had a phone call with her the other day. So that's just one piece of it. We do have our bonding bill carrying by Senator Pratt in St. Paul. This would, you know, we got one piece, we get another piece, and we can make the culture quarter with the stabilization of the riverbank even better. Just a point before tonight's meeting, I saw some young youths on the Verling Greenway Trail, and of course, wherever where I live, there's a pond, and the pond was frozen, and the kids were skipping rocks on the ice and stuff, and then I watched this as I was eating dinner, and, and then, of course, one of the, the kids thought he could walk on the ice, and he, he attempted to do that, and you know, he went in all, his hair got wet. He went in all the way in, and even though it was fifty degrees today, there was ice on the pond, and he comes out, and then that water is not fifty, you know, hypothermia in about fifteen minutes, so safety around the ponds, around the lakes. I drove over there right away, and I had a towel in the car. I was going to bring him home, and he said, no, he had his cell phone, and he called mom. And he had his bike there, but we, I told all the three kids to go home, so please be safe in our retaining ponds and be careful. Just a couple of things. We have the Chamber event, the Reds, Whites, and Brews at Canterbury for the Chamber, big event this Friday night. You have to register and get tickets, but there's still an opportunity to go there. March twenty-fourth, Main Street, Shakopee Breakfast, that the Chamber will be putting on by Turtles. Turtles is putting on a complimentary breakfast. This is open, but you do need to register on March twenty-fourth. Of course, now that it's fifty and we're thinking spring, the Easter egg hunt in Lyons Park on April ninth, kind of a big deal. I know it was a big deal the last couple of years. There is a nominal cost to it. You do need to register. And for spring, there is a, this is kind of ways out, but April thirtieth, Lyons Park, a pickleball tournament for all the folks who play pickleball, and you do need to register for that as well, so. Lot of stuff coming, and the sun is coming out, so. There we go. And the Easter Bunny will be around. Mr. Reynolds, the administration report?
Well, thanks, Mr. Mayor, members of council. You know, one of the benefits of going last is that all of my, but not all, I have one thing that's still on my list that hasn't been mentioned, and it's because I don't think you guys know it yet. So, you know, we've, we've been really proud about the XL Energy Mountain Bike Park for a lot of reasons. But it has been now selected as one of eight courses for the Minnesota Cycling Association twenty-twenty-two race schedule. And you can expect about a thousand participants and about two thousand or so spectators for that. It is on two days, August the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. I'm certainly going to be out there, because I want to see people do some of those things that, that are scary looking for me on a normal, on a normal bike, so. Yeah, it's, it's pretty exciting. Two years into it, a year into it, and bam, we're already, and, and for the amount of money that we spent on that, and the partnerships that we did, that, that is a signature course. It's a signature thing for the city, and, and this council should take a lot of pride in, in what you did with that.
That's awesome. Councillor Lehman?
Where's three thousand people going to park?
If we have to talk about parking again.
Good, good problem to have.
Mayor and Council, they have an agreement with Emerson to use their parking. I couldn't pass that up.
All right. Thank you very much. Item number eleven, is there any other business before this council? Councillor Lehman?
One thing I've been thinking about is the inflationary pressures and energy costs and supply chains, and well, world events aren't helping any of them. What do we have, inflation that we haven't seen in fifty years now?
Race gouging.
Well, whatever the reason is, I'm not here to split hairs politically on, on anything. The fact is, is that you've got inflationary pressures we haven't seen in fifty years affecting business, households, energy costs. A lot of the inflation is probably the energy cost, moving product and services around. And then you got the supply chain issues, which, you know, part of that is pandemic-related, some of that is world events-related, could get a lot worse, and, you know, I, some point, you know, you got to think where are we headed here, and what's, where are we going to land, and what's the impacts going to be?
Time Hotel, thank you very much. Councillor Contras?
I couldn't let this pass, and with good news, I just wanted to say congratulations to the high school girls' basketball team here in Shakopee. They're on their way to, to state, and kudos to Katie Cortez, Cortez, with her half-court shot.
For buzzer beater.
Buzzer beater, yes. Buzzer beater. Yes, awesome. So we wish them.
Made the national news.
Yes, we, ESPN, that's, yeah.
That was pretty awesome.
That was pretty awesome. So congrats to all of them.
Councillor Whiting?
Make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, March twenty-ninth at six, six PM?
Six PM?
Yes. So March twenty-ninth is our joint meeting with Shakopee Public Utilities. And we traditionally have that at six because it's splitting their five PM and our seven PM. And, and I, I don't remember which place we're having it at. I get, that'll come out with the agenda. I'll let you know where it is.
I have a motion. Did I get a second on that?
Second.
Councillor Contreras, thank you very much. Further discussion, discussion, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? A motion passes. We are adjourned at nine fifty.